That's right, brought it up in the public hearing, Park.
No, I agree with you. The instant the community realizes this project is a million dollar project, we have people very upset about the lagging infrastructure we have. We're going to need to be able to educate our answer this.
Right.
If I, if I were in their seat, I would be able to.
Right. And it needs to make clear that this money can only be used.
That's what I mean, that education.
It can't be used to fix the Highland Avenue water problem or the north south connection.
Right. Yes, because I'm with you on this.
Yes.
As a part of the public hearing, this is of the three possibilities, this was like the bottom of the list that I thought was the best use of this money, but it's the only way we can use them. So I totally understand that. I just, I'm, I'm with the board on this. We have to have some type of common education and stuff on the website. Really are going to have to educate people why we did want to do this. Otherwise, it's just just piss off a lot.
Just one comment on that. We are, as you know, you have already approved Highland Avenue funding, so that's been done. We have a really good plan for the water connection. So I think by early fall, by September, we'll be sharing with you some capital plans to fund those other priorities. So that hopefully will help.
Yeah.
And the public relations committee will really get bored out.
Just a question. You've done this for all the communities. Now, have they been into similar positions where they've been pushed into a corner with where funds can be used and that kind of thing? Are there any examples that you can give us as far as education programs? Or let me just go.
Um. No, it's well, all of the, the closeout projects that I've been involved in have been projects that were, um, I don't want to say more timely, but, um, infrastructure in support of housing for, um, income eligible seniors. We've done a downtown streetscape project, but that was a priority, um, a first priority for the municipality. Um, and generally speaking, um, other projects have been public infrastructure projects, but they were eligible because of the income levels of, um, the neighborhoods that they served in. And that's the reason, for example, that it wasn't possible to use this money for the, um, uh, Highland Avenue project, um, is that in order to do that, it would have had to have satisfied the low and moderate income benefit, which is a basic, um, tenant of the enabling legislation.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you for your input. Uh, we have the public comments as part of the, um, public hearing. If anybody that signed in for a public hearing.
No.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the.
Mr. President, may I just interject one thing, two things? Uh, first, there was a publication of notice of this public hearing. It appeared in the Daily Herald newspaper on July 23. Uh, we are seeking a certificate of publication. They tell me they've had some problems with their system, whatever that exactly means. And I haven't received it yet, but I understand it's necessary to be included with the application when filed. So I've been bugging them for that, uh, so that we can get that to the village clerk. And secondly, I, there's, there should be a sign in sheet for this public hearing. And I would ask that, uh, the presence of those people who are, uh, attending via Zoom be indicated on that, uh, sheet. We can't, we're not there to sign in, but, uh, they should be, uh, added and, uh, indicated that we attended remotely for the record.
That attendant sheet, um, is also a required part of the, uh, application document.
Is there any member of the public that signed in?
No.
Okay.
It's awesome.
Okay. Any other, uh, comments, Mr. Stevens?
No, sir.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. So move. Go on, call me.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Clay.
Hi.
So now after the, uh, public hearing, this is the village manager report. Do you want?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a resolution to approve.
Mr. President, we have a resolution approving the concept plan and budget for the application of the Community Development Black Grant. I would suggest at this time that we have a discussion. We'll have a presentation by Daryl from PRI. Uh, let me just briefly summarize the process that we've gone to get to this point before I hand it over to Carol. This process started by inviting, uh, two different architectural firms to make proposals to make, to be the streetscape, uh, uh, architects. And this board then voted to, uh, select PRI based on the qualifications and based on the costs. And then listening to that, um, uh, EEI has been, uh, working very closely with, uh, both the beautification committee, the BDC and staff, as well as with, uh, PRI and Daryl's staff, uh, working, combining the infrastructure and the architectural features of the plan. Uh, we've been through several iterations and you'll see in the budget in your packet, uh, that there, there were a lot of, uh, things included and a lot of things not included. Uh, we have several exhibits. They're also in your packets tonight, uh, that you can look at. Those show some of the features of the architectural features post ups. Um, this, these are specifics that have been, that will be included in the grant application. Uh, so once we agree on these, these particular features, we're locked into those features. Uh, the specifics of the budget will be submitted and then we'll have to, a lot of things will be bid, so there will be some modest changes at that point. But I do want to say that this passed through the, uh, through both the beautification committee and, uh, the BDC. We both worked very hard. So we limit the options. If you get down to a budget, it was exactly a million thirty four thousand. Uh, only one thing that I want to mention, it's not in the, in the package that will definitely be a part of this plan. We did, they had a really hard time coming down to the last twelve thousand dollars. So the final plan was a hundred and forty, one million forty six thousand dollars. So we have, what is not included in this plan is twelve thousand dollars to install the clock. But it's a big feature in the plan that will be installed. We'll use another funds for that. So with that, I would like to introduce, uh, Daryl, the, uh, CEO of PRI, who's been working with us with the village for quite some time. But, uh, who will give us kind of the, the architectural feel and the, um, aesthetic feel of this presentation. So Daryl.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Jay. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Hello.
Hopefully everyone can hear me. We'll get through this. I'll do my best to try not to bore you as well. Uh, but I will say it's been an exciting journey to be a part of the team, uh, working very closely with Jay, Josh, uh, uh, as well as, uh, EEI, of course, and Freddie and the beautification committee. I think together we've come up with a, with a great plan. And, uh, that's going to be, I think, highly acceptable to the, uh, the citizens there in downtown Hampshire, or in Hampshire. Um, what I'm going to go through today, first, I want to, uh, let you know that we did look at, because we understood the full scope of the project. The full scope, scope of the project was to, uh, develop the, uh, downtown portion, uh, of the, uh, of State Street, which, uh, begins at, uh, Jackson all the way to Kies, and which we did definitely look at. Um, and then we'll, and we'll go into that in a minute. And I, I will say, we'll also go into some of the design elements, uh, there at the end. You'll see some of those, uh, as we, uh, proceed further into the, uh, presentation. But again, we, uh, definitely looked at the, uh, every, everything from Jackson to Kies. But we also felt from our perspective that it was best to, uh, focus on a core, a core focus area of the downtown plan. As Freddie mentioned, it should be the, uh, area between Jefferson and Washington Street, which we identified as the, uh, festival block. This is the area that could serve the community as like the, the go to, uh, location for special events, for your summer dances, summer concerts, summer events, outdoor markets, um, any athletic events, or your village Christmas, uh, event that I understand that you have there, that Santa event. Um, this area could also, would also be the area of focus that could be rented out per se to by licensed to non-for-profits, private commercial groups, or even for just other special events. Um, but again, we've, uh, identified it as the festival boulevard, boulevard, which is the core focus of the State Street plan, uh, with, which will have, uh, as Freddie mentioned, the highest concentration of, uh, of the site improvements that you'll see here today. Can everyone see the plan? Is the plan on the screen that you have?
Yes.
I'm going to focus, I'm going to focus again on the festival boulevard first, and then we'll go to the other areas. Uh, we do believe, and, uh, as with any downtown area, especially, uh, here in State Street, on State Street, that parking is especially important to the, to support businesses along State Street. That, of course, we know as, as usually in every downtown area, um, to support the economic vitality of the downtown area. But due to the current roadway width, uh, as we did our assessment and evaluation, um, angled parking had to be limited to one side of the street. Um, angled parking with parallel parking, uh, on the, introduced on the opposite side of the street, uh, still meeting the minimum roadway dimensions while also offering a, uh, a buffer to the pedestrians that would walk along, uh, State Street and that corridor. So the redesign of State Street, it includes the, uh, installation of two permanent mid-block, uh, mid-block landscape areas. And what these mid-block landscape areas do is they visually narrow the roadway while yet calming traffic uh, and provide a green landscape buffer between the sidewalk, the sidewalk users and the traffic. These, uh, permanent mid-block areas, landscaped areas, they do, in other words, they exchange greenery, uh, for a small reduction in parking spaces. Uh, within the Jefferson to Washington block alone, uh, we have lost, uh, or we will have eliminated about six spaces to accommodate the design as you see on the screen. Street corners and curb extensions, which, uh, as Freddie mentioned, we refer to them as bulbouts. These bulbouts, they've been introduced at some of the key major intersections there at Jefferson, uh, and State Street, as well as the, uh, Washington, uh, Avenue and State Street corridor or intersections there, uh, to provide increased pedestrian space as well as an opportunity for social interaction while waiting on, you know, waiting to cross the street. These bulbouts, they also provide traffic calming benefits, uh, and additionally, they shorten the, uh, crossing distance uh, for those going from one side to the other there at the intersection. Uh, and the key to understand is even though these bulbouts, um, are sticking out into the street, they yet allow and maintain the, uh, the same level of service at each one of the intersection. In other words, they're not, they, they don't impede the traffic at, at all and affect it negatively, we'll say. The enhanced intersections also include, uh, as you can see from the color up there, they include decorative paving, period style lightings, that lighting, uh, poles that could have banners as well, banner poles, including period bollards with lights. The, uh, village's vintage clock could and would also be located at the intersection of Jefferson and, uh, State Street there in the north and we'll say east quadrant. The time clock would serve as a focal feature and a primary gateway, more like the entrance, the gateway element for all special events that could and would occur within the, uh, festival boulevard space as we have it there, as shown there. The, um, architectural scale of the buildings in that block, even though, uh, most of them are all one level, uh, but because of the way the, just when you're in the exterior environment, um, the building facades, they play a key role in the creation of, uh, the human scale experience. Uh, so what we've introduced is if you looking, as you look at the, um, the, uh, plan there, you'll see a web, uh, it looks like a web of lighting. And that's actually what it is. It's a system that's called catenary string lights. And there are others out there, other manufacturers, but this is the one we're recommending. It's a catenary, uh, string light systems. It's introduced to provide direct lighting onto the festival boulevard street itself. Um, onto the festival boulevard street while also lowering the ceiling. In other words, it provides a psychological benefit, uh, as well as serves that function, uh, uh, providing the lighting that we need or that would be needed, uh, to enhance the experience in that block. Um, so by lowering the ceiling approximately twenty feet, the, the, that web of lighting at its lowest point, which would be in the center, uh, would be twenty feet high, uh, as again, that would enhance the overall pedestrian experience within that, within that, that block. Um, so by introducing these period style, uh, light poles and lighting, which we'll go to in a minute, uh, at twenty-six foot high into this scheme, it provides, they provide the structural support so that the, uh, catenary light system is not strung from building facade to building facade as in some communities. Um, we've created, uh, a, a struct where it's internally structured, uh, by using the, uh, light poles as well as we would introduce banner poles, uh, intermittently, uh, to provide the, uh, the support that's needed for the, uh, catenary light system.
Uh, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
How, how does that, uh, perform in the winter time? Is that something the public works crews are going to put up in fair weather and pull down in the winter? Or the year round?
No, it's, no, sir. It's year round. That's something that's year round. There's something they don't have to take down once it's up. Um, it's a series of cables. It's actually, I believe, three cables, two cables intertwined around one major cable, um, in order to support the light, uh, or the series of light, uh, I'll call them can lights, but we'll get to those in a minute, um, that are on there, which are no different than, say, your cabling that you would have. And I know Hampshire doesn't have any in their downtown area, but what they would have is for traffic, to support a traffic light, um, that's suspended. Um, but yes, no, they don't have to get down and take, they do not have to take them down in the winter. Uh, matter of fact, the winter is, uh, when, uh, I think you'll get the most highlight, uh, highlighted experience from it. Just how it, how the lighting itself glistens off the, uh, the contrast off the, uh, white of the snow or whatever the case may be in the winter.
Can I ask a quick question also about the lighting?
Um, yes, sir.
We get significant truck traffic down on State Street.
Yes.
That, um, um, the lighting, I know you said it was twenty feet at its high, at its lowest point and a typical semi is about, what, thirteen and a half?
Correct.
So would that have any negative effect on these lights?
No, it would not have a negative effect on the lights from the manufacturer's, uh, recommendation. Twenty feet is about average, but they could go a lot higher. But again, you'll lose some of the effect of the, uh, lighting or the, uh, say the highlights that you may be trying to get on the ground plane, um, unless we intensify them. But the, the average, uh, at its lowest point, uh, they recommend twenty feet and it usually, uh, doesn't have any impact or negative impact on any vehicles of any type, uh, that go through there.
Thank you.
With, with the overhead lights, sir, is part of your recommendation, and maybe you'll be getting to this, to disallow semi-traffic through this festival area once this is complete?
Can I speak to that, please?
I was going to say, that's beyond my pay grade.
No, I'm just, you know, I'm thinking twenty feet. I'm looking at the, the space. I, I'm not saying I'm against allowing the, the semi-traffic. I think if we're going to pay this much money to have it through here, cut it off. But yeah, you can't get the full power of that.
I, I would like to speak to that because since January first, we, the village does have that authority.
Right.
Class three truck routes were related by the state effect of January first. We, we are actually supposed to take down the class three truck route and refer to it as a class two now, if you choose to. Um, or the village can, uh, actually prohibit, uh, vehicle trucks on, all the way up to Allen Road, uh, on State Street. And we'll find out how that works when the intersection of state and, uh, seventy-two is under construction because they'll be shutting down. That will be the, the rerouting, uh, during the detour for two weeks. So we'll see how that works. One of the comments that we did receive very early on at the meeting at the Hart and Bank, uh, uh, back, resource bank, uh, back in December, was one of the, one of the people there commented that they would like to bring your kids downtown because of all the truck traffic. So I do think that that's a fair consideration and, and, uh, that I'm not going to make any recommendations at this point, but I will say we brought them forward for some time.
Gotcha. Okay. I just, when we're thinking twenty feet up and the height of semis, I know they'll still be under that twenty feet. I just had me start to think like, oh, somebody's driving through a festival area.
You got like a, a draft effect or whatever you call it, coming off the truck, you know?
Right.
It's, it's going to. There's just way too much track, sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 go ahead.
Um, there's way too much traffic. It comes down State Street and it turns left on, on, uh, Kies, when they could just go down the road. That's why the road is there.
Right.
So there are a few trucks that try to come to the south at the beginning, just for park, uh, to go east. And they can act on, uh, because that's, you can't cross, the trucks can't cross the road. They're going to have to go all the way to the south at this point. But I, I do think that's a serious consider. Not, I mean, these, these lights, this, this is designed for truck traffic and handle the truck traffic. We really want to have a nice downtown.
Okay.
Feel safe, pedestrians feel safe.
But it could if the, if the majority of the board says, no, I don't want to reroute it.
This board, it now has the authority. In fact, uh, um, at.
No, I mean, if the board said, we still, if the majority says, we still want to allow the trucks, the height, everything, sir, is fine for semi-traffic.
Yes, it is.
Okay, cool. Sorry to interrupt the presentation. I just wanted.
Brad, I, I don't think I misspoke. I forgot you were here, but I think I'm correct in what I spoke about the truck routes, correct?
Jay, you were correct. Okay. Good. All right. Um, moving forward, um, as with most downtown streetscapes, uh, typically, uh, we introduce, uh, street trees. Uh, however, if you look at the, uh, existing, especially, um, the, the block that we're speaking of, that we're referring to, it's the festival block area. You can see that, um, there's not a lot of area for the addition of trees. Not to mention, we do have the, uh, catenary, um, kind of web network of lights above it, but they've been, they've been interjected in some of those. But I was more concerned with the fact that, uh, we were more concerned with the fact that along that block in particular, um, a lot of the facades there have, um, kind of, uh, canopy's overhangs, um, that extend out onto, over the pedestrian walk and the, uh, existing pedestrian walk that you have there now is not extensive. It's not, uh, anything greater than, I want to say it's eight feet. Um, but nevertheless, uh, we felt by, um, eliminating some areas and putting in areas for trees, you're going to now affect and have a negative impact on the overall circulation, um, uh, for the pedestrian experience. So we limited the trees to the intersections. So, um, you will see at the, uh, at that, we'll say the key intersection, uh, that's more of the gateway at Jefferson, we've introduced these, uh, street trees that are conducive to urban environments, definitely, obviously, um, have a branching, uh, habit that's conducive, uh, to downtown areas. But they're in, uh, the, uh, we'll say the south, east, southwest, and the northwest, uh, uh, bulbouts. That's what you can see there. And as we mentioned earlier, the vintage clock, uh, would be, uh, is proposed, uh, to be in the, um, bulbout that is shown at the, uh, north and the east side there of that particular intersection. Uh, we also would introduce low profile shrubs, uh, at each one of these areas in the, uh, ground plane or the planter areas beneath there, um, to yet again, make sure that we maintain visible, uh, the, the visibility and sight distances, uh, for vehicles. Anything that we do plant would be something that's low profile and something that's, uh, conducive to one, the harsh environment, um, that, such as, uh, snow plowing, salt, uh, whatever the case may be. Um, that's what we would recommend in, in and along those areas. Likewise, to kind of add some interest along that corridor, since we weren't able to put, uh, a lot of, uh, introduced trees or a lot of plantings in there, we are, uh, kind of proposing, uh, movable planters, uh, linear movable planters that, um, if we, seating, we're not worried about, we're going to relocate the existing seating that's there. But we are, uh, hoping to introduce some, um, movable planters, um, that you'll see there that, uh, will provide some summer seasonal seating so they can move them out into the festival space as needed. And, uh, when the event is over, then put them back parallel along the, uh, pedestrian sidewalk out of the way of the, the, the parked cars and the traffic that's there. So now if we, uh, look at, going back to where I initially started with the entire corridor, what we wanted to do is, uh, look, as we looked at the entire corridor from Jackson, we'll say to Jefferson, and then from Washington onward to Kies, uh, we knew we couldn't do as, uh, the exact same thing as the festival boulevard. For one, dollars wouldn't allow it. But yet we wanted to have some remnants of it where the theme was yet carried. We wanted to carry the theme out in those areas. And especially the, uh, the block beginning at Jackson to Jefferson, because that really serves as the transition from the residential area into more of the downtown core. So with that said, um, with that being the transition zone, uh, what we did was introduce the, uh, crosswalk treatments. And I'm not sure if you can see that, love that, that plan on your screen now at all. But at the intersection there, we did introduce bulbouts to again, slow the traffic, um, slow the traffic down, but yet, uh, give you that splash of color with the pavers at the base, um, uh, that gives you that sense of, oh, I'm coming into somewhere special, um, coming into more of the business district. And, uh, where possible, uh, we did introduce some street trees, uh, uh, recommend some street trees along that area. But for the most part, we're just going to, uh, uh, pave the street, uh, repave the street in asphalt uh, as it leads up to the, uh, main intersection there coming up to Jackson, uh, Jefferson, we'll say. Likewise, if you, uh, look at the, uh, area from Kies, from, uh, Washington to Kies, it's pretty much the same thing. Uh, we just, uh, introduced, uh, several areas, uh, preferably with, with, uh, pavers, stamped concrete, whatever, to give it the color and carry the theme out. Uh, and we would, uh, extend the lighting. Um, the, uh, period lighting would be extended, I believe, in each one of these areas from Jackson all the way to Kies. That would yet emphasize the theme, uh, until you get to the main festival block. So those are the basic elements of the improvement. Uh, and again, knowing that we only had the one point, uh, one, a million three thirty-four to work with. Um, that's why the majority of it did again, focus on that one festival block. Um, but again, that's the presentation as we have it right now. And I'm definitely happy to answer any additional questions that any one of you may have that, um, it may have arisen since the last time we spoke.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a couple, sir. Um, and, and I haven't been to the previous meetings that discussed this, so you may have answered those. And these, these questions in those meetings, so I apologize.
No problem.
The design that you provided is gorgeous. I, I really like this, like downtown feel. But if I looked at the design you provided, the architectural design and the accompanying price list of, here's the project that's in scope, out of scope, there seems to be a lot of things that are in this design that are not in scope, that add a ton to this design, that have me concerned that this may not be representative of what we end up with. So if you could speak to that a little bit, I, I greatly appreciate it. Things like the bollard lights are out, the benches are out, the water feature is out. It seems as though it's mainly concrete, uh, the decorative streetlights and the street trees on the festival block and the landscaping on the festival block, but like those, the movable planters you talked about are out, the benches are out, the water feature is out, bollard lights are out. So I'm just curious as to what in the design do we need to recognize are not actually a part of the million forty-six or whatever that is?
And I, I, I do apologize for mentioning the, uh, movable planters. I forgot they were out. Sorry about that, Freddie. We did take that out the last time. But, um, uh, yeah, well, given the fact we, we had a, a budget to, to work with. Uh, again, we started with the stars, with the, with the moon, we'll say, but we yet had to make sure that, uh, the reality was we had to make some choices because, um, everything that, uh, we needed to spend the money on was, a lot of it is stuff you can't see. It's, uh, more infrastructure and things that are a necessity in order to put the, uh, we'll say icing onto the cake. We had to make sure all the right ingredients were in there, so to speak. Uh, and so that's where we were working, uh, pretty closely with EEI that was working, uh, that was looking at the roadway, the storms, the sewer system, um, the storm structure, even the existing, um, the curb network, the, uh, roadway itself. A lot of that stuff, uh, while we need and find it, uh, definitely a necessity, it's not the, we'll say, the pretty glitzy glamour stuff that one would, uh, say is conducive to, wow, look, I got a great streetscape. But you definitely had to do those given the condition of, uh, what, what these, uh, elements were in. I believe nothing had been done there since, in over twenty years or something, right? But, um, Brad can probably expound on that more. But that's one reason why we did have to step back, um, with some of the elements that were on there.
Okay, thanks, sir. And that, that's a great segue to my next question, which was to Brad. Less than ten years ago, we just tore up all of the festival block area for water main improvements or stormwater improvements. We just redid a bunch of pipes down here within the last ten years. So what is the two hundred and twenty-five thousand for stormwater and water main improvements go towards?
Sure. So, yeah, roughly ten years ago, uh, there were several different projects, um, I think four or five different ones. Uh, one of them was to abandon an old four-inch water main and transfer water services. Uh, so that was, uh, completed. Uh, and then there were a series of drainage-related improvements to solve, uh, some problems that were occurring, uh, in the downtown area. Uh, so there was multiple projects associated with that. Uh, but certainly those projects did not solve every issue. Uh, there are known, uh, infrastructure issues. Uh, there are pipes that are in failure or have, uh, areas that need to be repaired uh, just north of the railroad. just north of the railroad tracks, for example. And with the amount of work that's being proposed, the amount of grade changes that will have to take place, there's definitely quite a bit of additional storm sewer work that'll need to be done to add inlets, to address crossings across State Street that are inadequate, things such as that. There's also quite, well, there's a little bit of water main, for example, at Jefferson Street. It's old. It's put in in the 50s, six-inch water main. It's undersized. It's cast iron. It's passed its useful life. You really don't want to put brand-new concrete pavement over that water main. Because without failure, the water main will break and you'll have a nice new patch within that area. So certainly, there was a lot of investment 10 or so years ago, but there was quite a bit not done. And at this point, based on the conceptual plans, that's our best estimate with the, with the cost.
If I could, trustee Kelly, but I wanted to point out that the three really expensive components that add up to $375,000, I think, on the concrete festival block and the two intersections. I would say that the beautification committee particularly felt that those were not just, that's not just concrete. There's brick pavers in there. It's very aesthetically pleasing, architecturally pleasing. So I think they considered those really more important than some of the other things that could be added later.
Those are, and correct me, sir, if I'm wrong, those concrete things and the pavers, those are those bump outs, those are the new designed crosswalks, the look and feel of the road part, right? That, that part I understood. It was more of the, I remember all the work that was just done. It seems like we're throwing 25% of our budget back to work that was done 10 years ago. But it sounds like maybe that work wasn't done.
It was different work.
Yeah, just to clarify, it is not a redo. That's not the case at all. This is an investment in work that was not complete. And certainly, you know, these are all ballpark, very high-level conceptual estimates. At this point, that's the level of the planning. And there's a number of contingencies in these numbers as is appropriate at this level. So certainly, as things are fine-tuned, there's additional detail. You know, we're all hopeful that there'll be additional dollars available for some of those things you were mentioning. But at this level, it's very hard to pin that down.
I have another question regarding water stuff. You mentioned that this, this plan goes one block west. So are we doing anything to rectify the water problems at Rin and Park?
There are, yeah, we did have some dollars set aside to, there are some issues on Rin that we're aware of. Projects that were identified years ago that were not addressed. So we have some of that money allotted toward assisting in that area.
Out of this, out of this project?
There, there is a storm sewer on Rin Street, for example, that is in very poor condition. We would propose that that be replaced. Now, the intersection of Rin and Park, there's a lot more issues that go into that. Basically, there's quite a bit of drainage area that runs to that area. This particular project is not going to 100% solve issues at that location. But certainly, we're trying to fix what we can with the dollars and the budget available.
So, so the trustee, client, and interim president Reed's question, the 175 for stormwater in this budget includes that work?
It includes some work on Rin Streets. There's some failure on some storms who are near State Street on Rin. Will it solve 100% of the drainage issue at the Rin and Park? No, it will not. But it certainly will help address some things.
One last point on that, trustee Klein, is we did use our televiser. We videoed, our own staff did that work and identified these areas and the idea was the essence.
As you're digging up stuff for stormwater improvements and the water mains and we're, we're going to dig up road to do the decorative concrete. I do love this plan. Asphalting is not included in this. Don't we have to repair the roads that we dig up? Isn't that part of this budget?
So if you look down below the things that were not, one of the options was to asphalt the entire festival block as well and not do any concrete. That's the point I was making.
Oh, that was instead of the concrete. So this budget includes, if we're going to dig up a road like Rin to fix stormwater system, we're going to be fixing.
The only thing that we'll be doing is just the concrete block. And then now I've forgotten all of a sudden. Brad, are we extending the asphalt one block in each direction?
No, I believe, Jay, that was at least removed from the initial budget. But trustee Kelly, certainly anything that we dig up, there would at least be a patch to, you know, patch the area. You certainly wouldn't leave it as stone or in disrepair.
Yeah, I just didn't see that type of thing in this budget. I didn't know if that's what's, like, where would that be included in this budget?
It would be, yeah, it'd be lumped into the stormwater improvements, for example.
One of the big decisions that was made along the way was instead, because it costs significantly more to concrete. We have to take out, I think it's 10 inches of what's there now. Just be completely reconstructing that one block in those two intersections. So that was significantly more expensive than just putting another layer of asphalt over the top or even cleaning down and replacing four or five inches of asphalt. So that was, I think, the, I think everybody on the camera here, including Daryl and the beautification committee, all felt one of the criteria, Freddie as well, we just didn't want to put lipstick on a pig and just make the street look pretty but not fix the infrastructure.
No, I absolutely understand.
And that as well is a legitimate reason why these ones are being spent, this purpose are not just.
Right. To that point, this is for Daryl. I feel weird calling him Daryl. I'm sorry, sir. You said, you know, the design you have, I'm in love with the overall design, like the lights, the benches. And I, that seems like It's a Wonderful Life kind of downtown. I forget the name of that, out of that movie, but.
Bedford Falls.
Bedford Falls. That's like Bedford Falls, right? To me, is what it seems like, like you said, in the winter and people walking through. I think that's great. The idea of us coming back later, fine, we need the extra funding. But let me ask you, doing things like bollard lights and the lighting, we're going to have to tear up part of the design, the brand-new concrete we just put down to wire in some of these things down the road. Is that, is that a recommendation you would make? Or is, is it, is it necessary for us to consider that, that, those specific things would have to be done as a part of this if we were to do it again in the future? I understand we're working towards a bubble. When I'm talking about practicality, we're going to spend money to make it look beautiful. And then go right back and drill into it to run wiring. That doesn't seem logical to me.
No, you're, you're, you're absolutely right. And obviously, if we had our way and you had your way, I'm sure we'd put it all in at one time. But Hampshire would not be the only community that ended up having, and I know the word has been used a lot because you're not sure if you're coming back to it or not, but phase in construction. But for now, let's use that word. Should you have to phase it in, there are lots of things that could be done as it relates to the electrical in particular, where you don't have to go and tear up newly paid, newly installed construction, such as you could put, have conduits laid already when you're doing the other lighting. When you're doing the street pole lighting that is recommended and that will be going in. You could have conduits laid going right to those various areas. And should there be brick, which that's what we're hoping as opposed to patterned concrete, what we do is, or what a contractor would do or the developer would do is take out just a few of those concrete blocks, find the conduit, run the wire back through it, and then sit the, I'll install the bollard lighting on top of it. Obviously, you got to cut the brick, cut around the brick too. But it's not as difficult as you think, and it has been done. Is it ideal? No. But has it been done? Yes.
All right. So that's something we need to make sure we take into consideration is, like you said, if we are looking to phase in more things, we need to think about it during this construction process for things like conduit and others that, that will save time and money down the road.
You're exactly right.
There was discussion about that, in fact, that we got an estimate from Daryl and Brad about putting the infrastructure, putting, putting the conduit and wiring it in, but it was significant, it was a significant cost. So that, that is not, I'm going to differ a little bit with what Daryl said. The approach was taken, this is all the money we're ever going to have for streetscape. To trustee Reed's point, this is not the highest priority in the village. We have a little high priorities. Roughly $45 million right now on my capital budget plan. So I think it'll be a long time before we come back. And I don't believe that you should expect bollard lights anytime in the near future. The things that could be added are features that would not require tearing up what we're doing now.
Like batches, movable.
Yes, and landscaping, that sort of thing. So there was, there was consideration to eliminating even more of the architectural features so that we could put more infrastructure in for future expenditures. But realistically speaking, we just realized that probably it's not going to be more money available in the near future. So we wanted this to be an all-inclusive budget. It's finished. It's done. What wants to come up by later, there are things they could add without tearing up the sidewalks and the streets. But our bollard lights would not, not be one of them that we were.
I have a few questions of mine. Parking spot length. I look at the design here and I see length of 18 feet for parallel parking and then for the angle parking is 19 feet. It's a guy with a big truck. Are we purposely designing the parking spaces so that to limit some of that bigger parking?
Can I reference how long your truck?
22 feet. And that's, and I speak as, I mean, there are a lot of residents in this town with the same truck or bigger than I have. I mean, it's just, it's hard to live in Hampshire. And so if we limit the parking space length, although like my truck as an example, will not fit in any of the parallel parking particularly. And then, and the parking spaces are 18 feet. I might be able to park in an 18-foot spot, but I'm going to hang out in the back. I mean, we taking any consideration into that? I'm not looking at it simply from my perspective. I mean, because I've got a smaller car, I can drive, put a tower up, park in a lot down the way. If it doesn't fit, no problem. However, some other residents, what are they right now?
The actual width of the roadway, if I can add, I believe was 56 feet, is that not, Brett? We have from curb to curb, we have 56 feet. Typically, you'd want at least 62, I believe, 62 feet in order to have parallel parking on both sides, which is why we opted to make sure that they remain, we'll say, industry standard to put parallel on one side so that it doesn't impact the overall major drive aisle, since you are still allowing trucks and things in there. But yes, the parking stalls that would be recommended and that we would end up showing and working with EEI on the construction plan would be those that are, that meet the industry standard. So if they're, if they're 20 feet, that's what they would be, 20 feet in length. I don't know, I don't believe that, I don't recall them being 22, but if they are, then we'd make sure they were 22 feet.
They're 18, they're 18 and 19.
Correct.
Brad, could you speak to what the standard size parking is?
Yeah, I believe the standard depth is 18 feet, industry standard. You know, certainly there's vehicles that are slightly longer. You know, I'm a truck owner too. So I have that issue in parking in certain areas. So, you know, certainly we can, you know, we can work with it to make it maybe a little bit deeper if that's the desire of the board. But, you know, you potentially also may lose some spots. But again, industry standard is 18 feet.
What are they right now, Brett?
I, I believe they're 18 feet. You know, I haven't measured the striping in a while out there since we last laid it out. It's probably been over a decade, but I would guess they're around 18 feet.
I think we also have to keep in mind safety. It's, it's just a crapshoot every time you pull out on State Street here. And with all respect to your truck, it's not the best vehicle to be parking on State Street, to be honest.
I agree.
I love not having angle both ways.
No, I, I'm not saying no much. I like this. I do like this.
And one of the things that we focused on in the committee meetings and the discussion is that we really have to focus on our off-street parking lots. I'm, I'm going to approach the railroad. There's a lot of parking right along Rin there that would really be handy. It's not using that. Probably the best approach is just put some asphalt and gravel down there and not even ask because they wouldn't know. Because they sell that railroad about every three or four years. But I do have a contact with them, we were talking to them about that. I think we have to focus more on our off-street parking. If we get James Motors relocated, we can recapture some of our off-street parking and parking lots. And people, we, we have the whole time it's fire, people will walk a little further to come and shop. They don't have to park right in front of the store.
I think that's fair. Has anyone from our public works department looked over this plan to see if, you know, snow, that kind of stuff is going to be an issue with the bulbouts and?
Yeah, Dave and, Dave and Mark are both integrally involved in both the infrastructure part and maintenance part. And this was designed, Daryl may want to speak to that too. It was designed for maintenance purposes, for easy maintenance.
I have an idea to throw out there. Going forward to kind of handle some of the things that we can't afford right now, what if we went out to businesses or even citizens and asked for a donation?
I think it's great, like, to have a name on that.
A bench or a tree or a planter or something.
Well, and that's what I was, I also have written down here for business add-on because it's, it's one of the things for like, one thing to take out was the paper entrance to Village Home. If there was a list of options, could we go approach our businesses and say, look, we're going to redo our streetscape. Here's your chance. Do you want, you know, to do a paver sidewalk and that kind of thing? And would we allow our businesses to make those types of decisions in front of their space at their cost?
I think that, like a sidewalk, no. If they want to pay to have a planter that's owned by the village, but they're going to donate towards it, that I'm okay with. But whatever that entire space is, it all needs to be uniform. So if, if Dr. Miller said no, and Copper Barrel said yes, and they wanted pavers, I think that would be horrible to have a pathwork.
I agree. If they want to pay for a planter to have Copper Barrel on the side of the planter.
Or like a bench or those type of things and help offset that so that, because I can't, I just, I really love Daryl's vision for this.
Even the water feature. I think we could find a business to pay for a water feature. Stanley would pay for a water feature if he could have his name on it.
Right, donated by Stanley Corporation or something. I mean, I think that's a great idea.
I think under Mr. Harris's item on the agenda, my kids might use about time too. That was discussed in the public relations committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just look at all those people that wanted to give money to that sign.
Raul?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that's going to draw people in. I think they're going to be.
Stanley was very interested in that.
Yeah.
Plus, I think that there are citizens that would contribute.
Like Miss Bonnie Abel.
Right? Or the, the, the family.
In your proposal, you have two different types of overhead lights presented. One looks more like the, the nice ones you'll see like in patios and backyards and a beer garden, stuff like that. They seem like the smaller bulbs. One looks like the larger ballast-style lights that are hanging. I'm probably using horrible terminology, but the overhead lights, you have the two different types. Which one does this proposal include? The smaller string lights or the larger, fewer position lights?
When speaking with, when we made the initial presentation, I think the desire was to have the larger lights. They would have a greater impact. So by using the larger lights, obviously, you don't need as many. But they, and they do provide, I guess, we'll say, the accent that we, that we'd be looking for. But yeah, the ones that we were proposing here would show the, we'll say, the larger canned lights, not necessarily the smaller ones.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say, if, if, if I could add, and I know we're not in the construction period yet, but this is something that I think it's important to note. They, this, this particular manufacturer, I'm sure there are others out there that do the same thing. They're concerned about the structurability of their system. They don't want someone to put something up. And then all of a sudden, whether it's wind loads, the snow loads, or whatever the case is, it all comes down. They provide all the engineering for the supports, whether, you don't have to get the supports from them. Whoever we recommend with the lighting, sterling lighting post or whoever, and if we decide to get banner posts, they work it out with that manufacturer, do all the necessary engineering and provide the proper supports, or at least we'll say structural integrity that's needed to support the, whether it's the large can lights or the smaller can lights for that entire distance of the block, whatever the case is. So you wouldn't have to worry about that in terms of your maintenance worries about. So you wouldn't have to worry about that in terms of your maintenance worries about there being an issue down the road.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions or comments about this concept? There you go. We can move on to the, before you even have a resolution approving the concept plan and budget application for the community development block. Resolution is twenty dash oh eight. Do we have any questions or comments about?
A dollar amount was important, ten thirty-four. So we're paying the amount of the?
Parker, ready to be reading the microphone, please?
Sorry, I didn't hear the last question.
I thought you had said that, yeah, what's the amount we get for the, for the?
CBU?
Yeah.
Which?
A million thirty-four.
So a million thirty-four. Because I thought you had said at the beginning of this, you, it was really hard to get right to that number so that we went, oh.
Twelve thousand dollars extra.
There's twelve thousand extra. So is that just, is that included in the ten thirty-four?
What I was pointing is that because we couldn't get down, we had to get down to that number.
Oh, we're not spending twelve thousand of what we could have.
We're going to, we're going to find other, I will find other funds in the budget to, to install a clock because that's a big part of our future.
Oh, I got what you're saying. Okay, that makes sense to me. That's where I was getting confused.
At one point, we were, we were actually considering trying to spend some of the rebuild Illinois grant money. We're getting that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars over time. We're considering putting some of that into this, which we found much more important, basically, we recommend to you. And it also complicated the grant, we had a local match, the whole town, most situation is, so I wanted to keep it right at the grant value.
And you're good with the two hundred thousand for engineering, design and architecture?
That's, this, these numbers are just, for this point, these are just budget. That's what this is. This is a concept plan and concept budget. So that will be refined and, yes, they will be started.
All right.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty dash oh eight, approving resolution for, speaking of concept plan and budget for the application for community development block. So.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, the draft I prepared had the budget at one million thirty-four thousand. I think the materials tonight show that it's just slightly different than that. It's one oh three four three four five, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, then the resolution should reflect that.
That's what I have. The one I have has one million thirty-four thousand.
That's the only number we've ever used, Freddie. Is that going to be a problem?
No, it won't be a problem.
Okay.
It's three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So the resolution for, for this be Freddie's amount or the amount that we've already?
The amount that's before you respond.
Okay, okay, then we won't change it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. There, we'll call vote.
Four.
Aye.
One. Three.
Five.
One.
Five.
Mr. President, we now have a resolution in support for the application for a community development block, same problem.
Do you have any questions or comments about the resolution this morning? I will entertain a motion to approve a resolution in support for the application for a community development block.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I will call vote, please.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion cast four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. I want to thank you for all your work and it's just beginning now. So thank you very much, we're all with you as well.
Thank you.
And Freddie, of course. Can't see you anymore, Freddie. Now, Mr. President, we have a, a recommendation, A five branding marketing proposal from the Public Relations Committee. So if you'd like to handle that, Mr. Reed, you're welcome to.
Sure.
Let's see, we're discussing.
I'll introduce Mr. John Harris. Thank you for waiting. It's Freddie and Freddie and Mr. Garrison, they don't need to stick around anymore.
No, they're.
You're welcome, you're welcome. You can stay and watch the show, but I don't want to keep you any longer than I have to.
Darryl and John eventually work together.
Yeah, I'm familiar with John. It's good to see him again though tonight. But you guys, I do appreciate being part of the meeting and definitely look forward to hearing, working with you guys in the future. Thank you again. Take care.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. John Harris, he's with A five branding company. We, it kind of is something that we talked about over the years about rebranding logos and all that kind of stuff, but it actually is a deeper conversation. And so we're doing a lot of marketing stuff. We're trying to figure out where we belong, where we sit, what we stand for, that kind of stuff. We're doing, we're wanting to do a brochure to the BDC. And so as part of this, we start talking about street signs and all that kind of stuff. And then this streetscape program. So it's really crucial now that we discuss this and figure out where it is that we open here. Mr. Kelly can speak about it in much deeper terminology than I can because he's closer to this than I am.
So A five did a very good job in marketing in that themselves, they got on the Jay's radar and then passed it on to us on the PR committee. And it started to point out some of these things that we, in our discussions in the PR committee that we talk about is this idea of a brand standard, right? Just like Century Twenty-One, you have colors, you have fonts, you have brand guidelines. There is a look and a feel. One of the things we talked about is in the Village of Hampshire, besides this sign here, we don't really have a logo, we don't have a look and feel. And in fact, there's a huge disconnection between all the organizations within the community. So the Park District has its own look and feel, the Chamber has its own look and feel, the Township has its own. And none of those match the school district, which we all are a part of, and we don't match any of them. So when we listened to the proposal, we started talking about things, really identified that one of the things we can do as a village is start to, as a PR committee, what we talked about was really start to look at, if we're going to become a village of the future, if we're really going to start moving towards a unified community, how do we start to identify ourselves? What's that brand in general we present ourselves? So that we're marketing to new businesses. We're creating brochures and marketing materials that are enticing people to a unified community. There are some examples that I'm sure people speak to this evening that they've done work with where they brought together Chamber, other organizations to have not the same logo, but a unified look and feel, a unified color scheme, whether it's purple, fire, or whatever it may be here. So that when a new business looks at Hampshire, they look at a unified community that's served by various organizations with a common purpose, a common look and feel. So we, when we met as the PR committee and we talked about overall marketing, Jay was also looking at things and brought up great questions. We talked about social media presence and our web presence and how are we, how are we presenting ourselves to the world? And is it the best foot forward that we currently could? So what we talked about was, we think we can do better. And we think that A five could help us have a better look and feel, a better brand presence and help to bring together the look and feel. At a conversation at the farmer's market with the Chamber, who is also happening in their own stride, was already talking about having a new logo, a new look and feel, new branding. So I said, well, hold, let us have a conversation real quick. There was an interest of having some symbiotic relationship between the look and feels and the brands, right? So that was the purpose of us bringing this forward. We did float it by the Park District, was also interested in being in the conversation and having that unified feel. I haven't spoken to the Township yet. I would assume that they would be okay. The idea also, when we go through the proposal, to note, a re, the proposal in a rebranded space, if we talk about phasing in, is phase one. It's not now, it does not include going through and then replacing every single logo on every truck and changing every, every piece of paper that's out there and every letter at the center. It would be a phased in rebranding, but we would get things like a brand guideline somebody could follow that when they order. We would get unified look and feel as we do things like flags on the poles.
Building curmats in different forms within the village and that kind of stuff so that they all look the same.
The website rebranding would be a part of it, not a redevelopment, but a look and feel. Those social media pages optimization around that. So there was, there was a lot to it. I'll, I'll let John speak to his proposal. But that's why we brought it forward, is that it's not, this is, I guess what I want to emphasize, this isn't just a village project. The village is driving the project, but we, we would invite the other community organizations to be a part of it as well, including like the library district. So I'll pause there.
John, can you go through your proposal that a thirty thousand put over before?
Before you start, I just wanted to just skinny mayor over here, she's the executive director of our chapter of commerce. You've heard, heard you several times. I wanted you to know who she is.
Wonderful. Nice to meet you. And thank you for the opportunity, opportunity to be with you tonight. And we both said, well, we are a branding digital firm. We're ten people. We're based in Chicago. I grew up out in Crystal Lake and Henry County, done a lot of work in the area. We're familiar with Hampshire. Hampshire Farms is, their parent company is a long time client of ours for about twenty years. So we're familiar with the area. And in terms of community branding, we've worked in Barrington, economic development, working at the government, and economic development in Crystal Lake. And, and this would create that unified look and feel and that story that you would tell so that it's, it's clear, it's concise, it's consistent, it's cohesive and it's compelling. And, and it would give you that story to assist with quality of life. So resident attraction, resident retention, economic development and tourism bring people in to Hampshire. And with the streetscape, with the collateral pieces that you're talking about, with the festivals, all of the things that are already in motion, to your point. This would just work to bring it all together. And you could phase, you would phase this in in terms of not only our work, but in terms of the overall budget. And we would work with you to develop that budget. And we like to work with a low median of high. We give you timetables and ways to potentially fund that. So your discussion around, your discussion around the streetscape is an excellent one. And there's, there's plenty of examples in our communities that are doing either naming rights and sponsorship, co-op and advertising programs. All sorts of things that can bring in money from the private sector. I think that's a big part of what we see happening now is what Steve Reed and Kelly were talking about is that idea of partnership, public and private sector and with other entities. So a lot of our, for example, in Niles, we work very closely, not only the village, but with various taxing bodies and the Chamber of Commerce. We're, we're in touch, we're members of the Niles Chamber of Commerce. That was, that was your cue there. The, yeah, right. As any chamber person should. But working with, we're, we're in contact with the Chamber in Niles every week, in Woodstock, with the city, in the Chamber of Commerce. Because, and these other governmental bodies, like you said, they, they may not want that symbol or logo. But to the extent that we can start to use the same set of language in terms of bringing people into the community and start using different, you know, the same types of colors and fonts, you create that identity, not only in the minds of those who are here, but in the minds of those who are outside the community that you want to attract to this community. So whether you want it at one time or for a lifetime to start a business or. So our proposal is, is to, to do a kickoff meeting with, with your team and then to do an audit of existing materials. And then to move on to some type of engagement and coordination with different entities. I think those conversations with other, other taxing bodies and other entities in the community would make sense. Again, whether that's first step, second step, and then beyond. At least we start to get a sense of input and, and buy in to, to what you would be pursuing. We would then work to define the audiences, your competition, key messages, and then overall brand platform, including, including the story, the words, the verbal and written and the tagline. We present lots of tagline options so that we can get to something that for you is ownable and different than other communities. And then we would work on the graphic identity portion. And we typically, I think in our proposal, we said we'd present three to four options. We never do less than three and often do more than four. And then get your input on that. Usually, you know, as you can see in Charlevoix, there's, there's, there's a leader that emerges. And then you go through some rounds of iterations to get it to right where you want it to be. And, and once that graphic identity is down, Grant Stownders, this was mentioned, and trustee Kelly, that would give you colors, fonts. And, and the ability to create materials either with or without us. So you could turn it over to anybody with their skills and be in design. And, and then off to, off to the prayer. The marketing tactics, we've identified a number in this proposal. Working with the committee in the kickoff, we could adjust some of those. You know, some might become more important, some might be less important. So we're very flexible in that approach. I don't want to prescribe today's standing before you exactly what we're going to produce, but as long as it's reasonable, we're flexible. I had that conversation about what's we're doing, yes, for you out of the date. And then we, we have a launch plan. Make sure that the launch is coordinated and is exciting, has impact. And if people, if people look at this and go, yes, that is, that's, that's a great start. There's a lot more to come as we continue to build in the future. Charlevoix was referenced here and I think that's an interesting case study for us. And we've got a few more of those, but just to focus on that one. That is, you know, the city of twenty-five hundred people in northern Michigan, between Traverse City and Petoskey, it's, it's beautiful country. And the city, the Chamber, the Convention of Visitors Bureau, the Main Street Organization, all wanted to come together under one common, one common feel. And then it ended up extending to their concert series, Live at Lake, Farmer's Market, as you can see, their green environment sustainability efforts. And then about a year later, city manager came back and said, you know, we're, we've got this, this ferry, this ferry that takes people, you know, across the water to Beaver Island. And we're going to move the ferry and we want to create a district, a mixed-use district. So people will be living there, it will be retail, it will be commercial. And so we work with them to develop the name of that and the graphic identity to be able to sell that, that, that business district, something that people would like to invest. So it's extended beyond that initial logo and, and tagline, look and feel, to become something that's integral to their overall way of life. Residents, quality of life, tourism.
One of the things that I enjoyed, the presentation in A five in general is, I've sat through the branding proposals in other capacities and a lot of companies coming in, they try to sell you a package, they design everything, then they, one of the things that, that I enjoyed on some of the jobs, like is, is creating that partnership and it's more of a tailored experience. So, you know, this is the initial package. Should we choose to move forward with other initiatives or need other other services, that's something that John's company can offer. And it's something that we can buy for what I like, it's not, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution as is so many other branding.
I would just add that I've worked with digital marketing companies for the last twenty years really. And very similar capacity branding and then rolling out strategies, most of digital strategies these days. And I think this is a very perfect time for us, for this village. It's really a crossroads for us. Streetscape is a major investment we're making. The Economic Development brochure will be coming soon. We don't want to finish that without their touches on it. The Chamber is looking, Jean brought in her banners with, to BDC recently, and BDC kind of had at it, had all their opinions. And I think that now this, this would be a great way to focus. Wayfinding signs, the education committee's been working on, all those can help us. All those can help us brand. So if we're going to do it, this is the perfect time to do it in my mind. I just want to add one thing also. We talked. About funding, uh, Mike's, John is familiar with this. Uh, we do have hotel motel tax funds that we have. Actually, a hard time spending because of the eligibility. This program is eligible. And, uh, maybe you, you agree with that, John. Most of the other communities just send resources. I just want to give you an update on that fund that, uh, we provided today. Um, the current fund balance is sixty-four thousand dollars. We do have anticipated income this year, um, and after our commitments, we have uncommitted, uncommitted dollars of fifty thousand dollars today. That, and that includes funding the chamber this year, which has already been approved, uh, rolling over the funding for concrete next year potentially. So those funds have been set aside already. So there's fifty thousand dollars of uncommitted hotel tax.
Does anyone have any questions about the proposal or for John? Uh, one of the things that we talked about in the PR committee, actually our actual motion was to, um, recommend to the village board. That we move forward with a, with proposal from a by, uh, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. But then along with that is we may, we want to make the recommendation that we put on hold any external facing. Print, uh, contest, print and display. Meaning that, you know, we're not, until this is all over, until our branding exercise is over. Meaning that we're in the midst of working on an economic development brochure, but we're going to kind of pump the brakes on it because we want to be involved in the brand. The street signs as an example, we wanted to move forward with is in, uh, for the beautification committee, but we'd like to. Kind of put all that kind of stuff on hold. Now.
That's temporary. Won't tell the brand is to design.
Bear any type of emergency. If we need to send a letter out to the residents for any type of reason, or if we need to put something out, you know. For extreme, you know, extreme circumstances or something like that, that we're not, we're not putting all communications on. It's just that we're not going to invest. The public relations committee felt that we didn't want the village to start investing money in the published publications, business cards and that kind of stuff. This was absolutely, absolutely.
So anything that we currently have, letterhead, we have, uh, business cards, we have email templates, all that is business as usual. Nothing changes with that. It's any additional you spent on wayfinding signs, on banner signs in the community, on printing the brochure. Things that we haven't paid for yet, or we don't have that we currently utilize, just say pause, get the new branding figured out. Get the board to approve the new look and feel and the logo and the story and everything behind it, the headline. And then have that incorporated into all aspects.
And I don't think that the board needs to vote on me. I think that's more of an internal process. But I, but I just wanted the board to be aware that's kind of where the public is, that he is on this and we're committed to, uh, moving forward with the branding. Should the board support it? Make sure that we are all on the same page. With full support of this, this very. Uh, how should I do this? I think that I will entertain a motion to approve the proposal that is in front of you. From a point pointing, not to exceed twenty thousand.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I think it's just important to note too, you know, that'd be part of the motion, that if there are things that are in this proposal that you think. Well, I'd rather there be something else instead of this. This is a fluid proposal that we can take things to that. It's just, we have a spending cap of up to twenty thousand.
John and I will work to, toward that budget and come up with a specific proposal to meet that twenty thousand dollars probably in phases. And then I, I make that available to public relations committee and.
Any questions or comments? I have to roll call both of you.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Thank you so much for spending your evening with us.
Thank you. Uh, it was instructive and enlightening and I very much appreciate it and, uh, on behalf of, uh, the I came to the forward order. Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, the main thing in the agenda tonight, a motion to approve a gravel license for the Hampshire White Riders snowmobile club. And I believe the application is in your packet.
Just one they go up here.
Not giving away guns this week.
That's right. No, that's the hunting, uh, sports.
I'll, I'll, I'll miss the snowmobile month.
Twenty twenty is gun month.
Yes. Mr. Harris, not the.
Wanting to go to sales.
You gotta, you gotta split. We won't take any offense to you running out of here.
You're actually going another hour or two.
We usually stay till ten.
We've had this first time this president.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the brand application for ladder pension.
So.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Can we roll call both of you?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi. All right. On the village board committee reports, trustee Kelly, you are up.
All right. So the only thing I have to report. Well, I have two. One, I want to publicly thank Waste Management who donated porta-johns for the concrete race.
Oh, is that why they were down there?
At the, no, at the middle school. There was one. And then they also donated. An ADA and a regular porta-john and two hand sanitizer stations for the movie night that the park district did.
Movie. I drove by and like, wait, this is.
Yeah. So, so they donated that. It was very nice of them. I think I picked it up by now, but so just publicly to say thank you to Vaughn and his team. And in fact, uh, I think, I don't know if you were working with Vaughn or somebody, had anybody from the village board contacted Waste Management? Is that Lori? Okay. So I found out about the middle school the day before. Um, they needed to drop it off. They already knew about this one, which was awesome. But the park district told me about the other one the day before and my comment to the park district was, yeah, that's nice, but I need more than a day notice, but I'll check. And Vaughn was like, yeah, we, but, so that was really, really great of Waste Management to accommodate that in addition. Lori, thank you for taking that on as well. That was really appreciated. Thank you for me that went well. That was it for Waste Management. The other thing I have is a notification from MediaCom.
Oh, our favorite.
There's two things for MediaCom. One, I had a resident reach out because MediaCom told them they don't run fiber in the community. They don't do high speed over fiber. That is absolutely true. MediaCom does high speed internet over cable, so over coax. So once I helped a resident out, they're able to get the high speed internet. All of the residential area of Hampshire and the older downtown even on Panama. Can have up to one gig, uh, internet speeds through MediaCom, but it's through cable. So it's coax that they have to run like you're getting cable TV. It's really, really fast internet. But if you call them and ask for fiber, they're going to tell you they don't offer it in town. They actually give it through cable. Uh, the other thing is, uh, kind of hilarious, uh, they are no longer extending their contract with the NFL Network or NFL Red Zone. So if you're a cable subscriber and you actually thought that season's going to kick off this year, uh, you are going to get it to me. There's probably no football anyway.
I opted out of playing this year. I'm still waiting for my check.
Go get your three hundred K soon. That is all I have for other services.
Public Works, I'm guessing will take a pass because he's.
He's what he?
Business Development Commission gets to take a pass because Ryan's not here. Finance Committee will not take a pass because she is here.
Even if I wasn't here, it would not take a pass. Okay, you have the financial reports in front of you. So first, let's look at the reimbursements. We have. Five reimbursements, totally four hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-three cents to be paid out before August twelfth, twenty twenty. Any questions? Make my motion.
I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable.
No, not reimbursement.
Reimbursements for four hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Second. All favor?
Nope.
Oh, wait, roll call. I got all excited. No, not here.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Motion passed for zero.
Floor's yours, ma'am.
And then the regular accounts payable, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents to be paid. Paid out before August twelfth, twenty twenty. Question? My question, askers are not here. I'm assuming there's no questions.
Mr. Kelly's over there looking pretty hard.
I'm trying to remember back in my head the whole street stall thing and I know we have to do minimum orders.
Yes, we pay a year round. We pay a year round.
Twice in a month.
Yeah, the, the public works crew really enjoys margaritas and they don't themselves.
We get through minutes and that's without any change.
Uh, I do have a question. Page four.
Of course.
Ruining.
Repair bike path. Which bike path did we repair?
So that, um, that is, um, yeah, fixing comments mess over by Tuscany Woods.
And we received the money from comment?
We did.
Okay.
Yep.
It looks really nice.
Does it?
It looks beautiful.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Have them work with revenue.
Just took it here.
Come on, yeah.
Champion. Tom, that owes me a lot.
Any other questions?
I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the, uh, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents. So move. I'm not going to ask for questions or counts because she already did. Try to roll up all of those, please.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Motion passed for zero.
Okay, now that we're past that, no questions. Who's better?
That is, um, so we like, don't belong to our own aggregation program, but we do, um, purchase our electric from them. Versus comment.
Oh.
So we pay a delivery charge and we pay an extra, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Nothing further. That's somebody's wonder tree.
Cover situations, we covered. Finding is up.
Uh, yeah, I have one item. There is a meeting coming up on August eleventh. On the agenda will be a petition from trustee Klein or variants. Are you not allowed to have front porches in that area?
I'm, there's a thirty foot setback and I'm going into the setback.
She's going to go on like twenty-five feet into the setback.
Yeah. I'm going up into the street with my front porch.
You should see if you get some streetscape money.
Oh, okay. I guess that application will be denied.
Good thing I should seem like to give some facade money, but that doesn't really work in my favor either. So.
You know, and then also on the agenda will be a, a general variance of a sign for truck country.
Didn't we already give them?
This is just a little cleanup work.
Oh.
Okay. Anything, anything further, sir?
Everything's fine and zone.
Public safety. I'm guessing everyone's safe. And, uh, fields and trails gets to take the pass, but we just covered that too.
Sweet.
New business or other announcements?
I have a question.
I have one too, but I'll let you ask yours first.
Where did James put their cars on movie night?
Yeah, um, I was ordered to sit there. Astro terrestrial. They beamed him up.
So they take them all the way back down to like South Shore or wherever.
I don't know.
And sometimes they take them up to the drinking water treatment plant on Harmony. They may have been up there.
We offered to help.
It's because they wouldn't want you to drive the fast one.
Seventy, seventy-three cars there.
Wow.
Were there that many of the driving? I didn't see.
Uh, we had, we had about sixty or seventy cars. I had to jumpstart two of them.
One of them was the perp.
So you listen to the radio, right, for the sound, which is fine. And then I'm shutting off all the lights and anything I can because, you know, you got the car, the bear is going to die. But then you look at some of these cars, all the lights are on in the car. That guy is not going to stop. The kid opening, closing the door and they got the power running boards that open and close and stuff like that. And then you go, no. So I was going, I made thirty bucks.
So was it? You had to listen over your FM radio?
Well, you could, you could, or you could listen to the speakers that the neighborhood sent us to that.
Okay. Cause I was like, the neighborhood was arguing that it was too loud.
They knew both. It was kind of neat.
Okay, cool.
What neighborhood?
Oh, on Facebook, residents were like, I wondered why it was so damn loud.
I couldn't sleep. You turned the volume down, it was one night.
And it was a Disney movie, wasn't it?
One of them was the same person that always complains about using the concrete creek. And I was like, well, at least it's a normal year. We got our normal noise for the one event that we do outside. Um, I have a question as far as like parliamentary procedure or something like that. I do understand that there was a denial of, of the BDC facade program, not, uh, pointing any fingers or. Or anything like that.
Can we just surpass it?
No. Okay. So I'm, I'm curious. So like if a zoning variance or something like that gets denied, do we have an appeals process for it?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not a legitimate recommendation.
There's, there's nothing recommendation or denial, it's my knowledge. Correct. So. All that happened was that it was sent back questions, which has happened on every project that I've been involved. On at least two or three times back questions and clarification and even some suggestions. But there's been no vote, there's been no recognition.
I'm, I'm aware, I'm aware of that part. So I'm, I'm curious for my own sanity. They can, if.
This case out.
If, if there was going to be a denial, does that still come to the village board because of?
Yes, any, any application that comes before the BDC will be voted up or down. And then that recommendation will come to the board.
No matter what.
Yes. And Josh has taken a lot of time to rewrite all the regulations and tighten up that ship. Lori's asked that we, uh, have better accounting with the funds. So it's really under control.
Awesome.
And with full support of the beautification.
I'm just curious.
That's awesome. There, there's strictly advisory in that.
Okay. Okay. Any other announcements?
Yeah. Which, which gas station location is Speedway?
Off at the truck stop, man. We're going to have Slurpees right here.
Seven eleven.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Speedway sold all of their gas stations to seven eleven for twenty-one billion dollars.
Yeah. So we're going to have Slurpees up at the truck stop. It goes.
It's the gas station.
It's a division of Marathon.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They already had Slurpees, like.
Yeah, but now they're going to have the real thing. Not like, not like, you know, you Mountain Dew and then Mountain Rush.
Right.
I have a question for John. You mentioned Hampshire, um.
Hampshire first.
They just sold, didn't they?
Um, I, I don't know enough about what's going on with Hampshire Farm. So I should attorney my privilege.
It's not an attorney.
I'm not up to speed on the, on the absolute latest. So.
I thought that was the parent company.
Hampshire Farms?
Yeah.
I thought that was just the name of the business.
I think, I thought it was the parent company.
No, no. Uh, so let me, let me get, let me get the latest for you.
Well, the one you told us. Mary, Mary Addie.
Oh, who knew? Yeah, apparently not me.
Hampshire Farms, look, you're a hero.
I, uh, I have one other question for John. Have you ever been to a more fun village board meeting?
I have not.
That's, that's why I took this job. For, for the record, and I, I mean this with, um. Affection, I did write down, uh, the public safety, I guess everyone is safe.
No, that's been the tag on it.
Everyone's safe.
I, yeah, so when I, safety, they come to me and I have nothing. And so I wrote, no record, no record. It was boring. I go, everyone's safe.
That's great.
So if Toby has it now, he's not here to yell at anybody.
But he says the same thing.
Yeah, that depends on his mood. If he's grouchy.
Somebody recorded on something that could be, or got this community, you get, you get your ad. All right. Any other announcements?
Yeah, I'd like to put in, in the minutes that for anybody that reads them, I know all the citizens do. We're getting into August and if you haven't done your census yet, do your census.
They're not going to.
Thank you for bringing that up. I'm disappointed our PR committee chairperson didn't. Thank you for.
All right. I'm disappointed that my PR committee didn't bring it up here.
So I, yeah.
I just heard that they're cutting it off.
No, September, September.
Well, that was, it was originally end of October and because that doesn't give them enough time to fully report the numbers by the constitutional date they have to have it done. They've now said, regardless of what certain headline said, the census bureau said, we cannot do this in that timeframe. We have to end September.
And so they are knocking on doors because as you were, may or may not know, I recently moved and I did fill it out for being in that house. But we own the house, but we weren't in it on April first or whatever, because they kept sending it to the house. But apparently that didn't make sense or whatever. So some, some lady came to the house with it. So they're, and knocked on the door. So they're, they are out in town.
So anyway, PR, uh, public relations committee pushed that so we can get every dollar that we can get.
Do we know what percentage we're up to?
We were, we were.
That's a crazy question.
Two last week to cheer us to the eighty-five.
Oh, I heard it.
That's bad.
I couldn't hear more than seventy, seventy-five. I couldn't hear, we're under 70, 75.
The last time I checked, it was 72, but that was a couple places ago. Okay.
So we're up a little bit, but not by much.
But 28% is a huge, we have a lot that we're missing out on.
So we are getting, we are getting new signs. That's something that Jay was going to work on. I'm sure he already has. But, uh, because the signs here, everybody's seen, he's going to get some big ones or whatever.
I do have a question about that though, because they are able to tell us that 72% of your houses or house, which is not addresses have replied. I doubt we're going to ever get 100%. So let's say we end at 85 or 90. For the remaining 15 to 10%, do they then just take an average of those that reported and apply it to that 10 to 15% of households?
I don't know, but I will look.
Okay.
And.
Because I, I mean, if they can tell us how many percentage we're at, there's got to be some type of calculation that they're not just going to. I guess those houses disappear.
We've got, we talked at our last PR, uh, with the, of social media, kind of public things under, under regular, whatever.
Like how-to video, online file.
Yeah, right, or just please do it so we can.
And Jay was going to talk with the library. I know I keep throwing him under the bus. I don't mean.
I've already spoken to the library. I do want to remind you that I'm waiting for the two of you to come up with one of the, uh, to download something from the Census website, other side of ComEd.
Oh, we got to get that done.
How about if the PR committee does another cute video like this?
I also suggest a cute video. No, that wasn't on the video. That was just a picture.
That was a picture.
Um, I don't know who was in that boat.
Yeah, that's another thing. You can't tell because there were masks on those.
So one thing I did commit to in the PR committee is to do a, I'm going to use Camtasia to do a screen capture of how do you fill out the census online? Talk through it, and then we'll publish that on social media as well.
Is there a way to put like at our signs, like, uh, I, I don't know what the term is for those signs where you change the letters out and whatnot. But like, we have 72% that report the percentage we have like on a daily or weekly basis, so it could.
We'd have to be really nice to the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
If the Chamber of Commerce, like for the next month or so, could help us out.
On a daily basis. Maybe, maybe. If you're golf hunting, you can have it the rest of the month.
Okay. Well, your golf hunting's coming up, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the day of a board meeting, though, so we can't have any refreshments.
Wait, the golf hunting's on a board meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's not a board meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know who would have done that. Just a thought. I mean, that puts a little pressure on.
I like that idea.
You know.
Yeah.
You should be in charge, yeah.
I, well.
At least sometime you get done.
Yeah. I'll, uh, run for interim president next time.
I told you it was going to happen. I'm running for interim president.
I know, I already voted for it the third time.
It's a charge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope I wasn't that bad.
No, you did great.
All right.
I'm trying to get myself back into teacher mode, by the way. Good job. Your agenda for you.
Mr. Klein.
Can the village congratulate the Donlin family?
Oh, my gosh, yes. Holy wow.
How many are there in the dome? Well, because one of these kids walk up and Jay goes, who are, who are all these kids? I'm like, I don't know, but let's watch and see what happens.
What'd she say? They have 27 kids.
28. The one family has 10, the other family has seven, and the third family has two.
Well, there's your census yet.
I guarantee they filled it up on the first day.
Yeah.
Obviously, you would, yes.
Yeah.
As well as, as well as, we should probably congratulate Ms. Bonnie Engel for, for being as committed as she has been to this community for her whole life, but really for the last 20 years, not, and never missing a year, giving honor to her.
And who knew? I live on Panama Avenue. I didn't know where it got its name.
Right. You know, walking out.
She was raised, she was raised in Panama.
Yeah, she was, but they came back here so she could be born here, and then they went back.
One of the areas.
Yeah, but you, you don't know your street.
That's funny. If you were just bringing Panama Canal. It's a shipping lane.
Panama Canal.
Did you see, uh, I'm not making light of this, but there was a residence on the corner of Panama and State actually digging a canal.
I saw that. Did you see it?
Yep.
They don't.
Hey, it's nobody.
No, isn't it Mr. Thorogitson that's good? I think that's who it was.
I think so, yeah. And they did not have a Julia check before.
No, he'll feel if he has power.
Okay, are we going to do a thing?
And then, and then the public.
You want to? Just that you're interim president, you want to try it?